I will first invite deputations to speak. Each speaker will have up to three minutes to speak. Your written and oral submissions will not enjoy the protection and immunity under legal power and privileges ordinance cap 382. So please note this point. Press speaker, Mr. Lo Ho Long. Good morning. I am strongly against the N E N T plan. Because when I was a kid, my teacher taught me that do not do to others that you wouldn't want people to do to you. Because villagers have lived there for a few generations. They're still living together and as extended families. So why should the homes be pulled down and evicted? Farmers in Hong Kong have provided vegetables and pork for us for many years. Why do you want to stop their farming activities and say that they can be rehabilitated elsewhere? My grandpa lives in a PRH unit in Tsung Shui Wai. Every day he goes to the park downstairs. He just sits there throughout the day with nothing to do. And he has to travel for more than an hour before he goes to Yunnan to chat with old friends. I am twenty-five years old now. I don't want to see twenty, thirty years down the road when I in fifties, my son would ask me when chewing China grown celery. Why there is no farmers in Hong Kong? Why do we have to eat vegetables from the mainland only? And how did the anti look like when you were a kid? I don't want to evict farmers and villagers for the sake of a PRH block where everyone is enclosed within four walls. With so much land in the urban areas, why can't they be used for building PRH and N H O S? Why are we asked to live in places now being occupied by people for generations? I'd rather be a useless person than a sinner. I don't want to live in a PRH unit in N E N T when I won't be able to face up to my son's queries. Well, these people have grown vegetables there for forty, fifty years. They should be allowed to live there happily. So long as we don't build so many luxury flats in the urban areas, we can satisfy the housing needs of many people. The government and developers should not have all the say about development. We want everyone in Hong Kong to do a better job so that we can face our next generation without qualms. And Mr. Chen, we still have a choice. Before you decide whether you step down or not, withdraw the N E N T plan. And I only saw your eyes or less than, saw your face less than, for less than one minute during the three minutes I spoke. Thank you. Ms. Xin Feng Yi. Thank you. I'm Xin Feng Yi. I live in Shamshe Po Tong Chao Street, a redeveloped site. I'm here to support the N E N T NDAs. Alright, my shop, my flat, my land is being resumed. And I think the N E N T shares a similar fate as we. We are living happily in our own flat. We do business there. And why all of a sudden you want to resume our land without prior consultation with us? So? The land resumption process has been going on for six years in Shamshe Po and is not yet complete. All my typhoons have moved out. I live in my own unit alone. I do business there, but I am very frightened. Every time I ask the U R A to complete the transaction quickly, still it is not yet completed. So, Mr. Chen, please help us to resolve this problem. From twenty-six to nine, to now, the issue is still dragging on. We suffer mental stress. At first, we didn't know where to complain. We have nowhere to complain. We have really suffered. Mr. Chen, please help us. We're not asking for a lot. We just want a fair and just arrangement. I have a shop. I need to do business. Please give me an opportunity to continue my business. I live in a cock loft, you know? The size of my cock loft is just the same as that of my shop. We have almost two thousand square feet. However, the compensation offered to us is not enough for buying a two hundred square feet shop. So, please be sympathetic to the plight of ordinary members of the public and also property owners so that we don't have to suffer every night. The nearby units are all vacated. I've nowhere to live. I've always lived on the cock loft of my shop. Thank you. Secretary, please help us. Alright. Please note that the subject of this public hearing is N E N T NDAs. Of course, you can bring out issues in your submission. Of course, you may draw reference from N E N T NDAs, but please focus on the subject. Ms. Ling Feng Ha. Thank you. Chairman, members of the panel. We are affected by unjust development. So we must come out to tell you the evils of redevelopment.
Well, the Kuntong redevelopment area is almost vacated. I'm among the few who have remained. The relevant departments have been stalling. They have not tackled our case proactively. So there are demolition activities going on and I have to witness the dissolution of Kuntong and the U R A has turned a blind eye to our situation. The U R A doesn't want to provide us with in situ rehousing by giving us reasonable compensation. So I am in a very poor situation. On the sixteenth of this month, there was a major piece of news. Because of redevelopment, a very good neighbor, a good husband, a good father was jailed for fifteen months. He was accused of fraud and other things. And a family broke up all because of redevelopment. So he was asked to accept compensation for his flat. So how many people will become victims of N E N T NDAs? Mr. Paul Chen, you worked hard to protect your family at the expense of other people's homes and means of livelihood. How should we view you? Well, your family owns twenty thousand, twenty thousand square feet of land. It's just like the story in the Bible. Five cakes and two fishes were able to feed five thousand people. Well, you should allow farming to go on so that we have safe food and you should allow city and rural areas to coexist. You should take the lead, the government should take the lead to reduce of solid waste so that we can have organic fertilizers produced. And I, all these can be profitable. And the government should also conserve our rural areas and refuse sorting. Well, I think I will pass on this written submission to the secretary, certainly. Because we only have three minutes each. There may not be enough time for you to tell us everything, but you can pass on your written submission to us.
Ms. Liu To Sheng. Good morning, members. Good morning, secretary. I'm here today because I understand the plight of N E N T residents. They've been living there for dozens of years. They have a sense of belonging there. You force them to leave the land. They are just like me. We are suppressed by U R A. I am number one hundred eighty-seven D of Hightown Street. My property is taken away by the government. It resumes my property. My right has been taken away. Secretary, everything you do is right because you are an official. You know the laws. I am just a grassroots. And even my flat is resumed and our rights to the property is violated. One of the landowners has got the notice from court and his flats will be resumed. I just want to have a flat in Shamshe Po so that I have a roof over my head. I have been in Shamshe Po all my life. I study there and I work there. I want to have in situ relocation. Please really implement people-based approach. Don't try to profiteer in the name of development. What's the principle of development? It should be to change the living environment for people living in the old area, to provide a new home to them and to keep the existing network in the community. You should not throw in large amount of money to build luxury housing. Just take a look online and tell me which redevelopment project is not about building luxury housing and how many redevelopment projects will really relocate existing residents in situ. Many residents affected are relocated to Tsuen Moon and Yunnan. Some of them don't even get a flat back. The U R A forcefully take our flats. I don't have any channels to lodge my complaint. I hope members will speak for the grassroots so that we can see justice, so that small landowners will not be driven to the streets. I will protect my home till my death. I won't bow to evil powers. I will continue with the battle. I oppose N E N T development. Shelf the plan. Start consultation afresh and don't make mistake in developing N E N T. Alright, time's up. Next, Ms. Li Kuang.
Good morning, chairman, members and residents. I'm from Shamshe Po. I live on the fifth floor of one eight seven D of Hightown Street. I'm here at this meeting on N E N T because I share the feelings of those affected. We are the underprivileged and the people in power, the rich, they suppress us. The natural environment in anti is resumed for Hightown Street in Shamshe Po. The land price is suppressed, is reduced by U R A when they resume our land. And the compensation is so mega that in getting the compensation is just like we, we don't even have a place to live in. The court already said that the U R A should liaise with us to resolve the matter, but the U R A simply stores its feet. It is not sincere in talking to us to resolve the problem. Members, Shamshe Po is a good place. I have been living in Shamshe Po. And myself and my family love the district. It's highly accessible and the prices are cheap. I want to stay there. So the U R A should observe people-based approach. It should relocate the grassroots in situ. There should be flat-for-flat exchange. And I should be given a flat back. Members, you should know that U R A is self-financing. So it looks at property and it suppresses and reduces land price so it profiteers. It sets its eyes on a bonus, on profits. It's operating in a black box. It lacks transparency and the landowners cannot really bargain with them. They are suppressing us. U R A acts in the name of development, but you should know what it means by development. It means building houses in the area so that the affected residents can move in. I think this is what it means by development. Do you agree with me, secretary? U R A sells the land to developers and the grassroots are left with nothing. Don't leave redevelopment projects in a mess. Shelf N E N T project. Start consultation and planning afresh and observe sustainable development. Mind conservation. We should keep rural areas. Time's up.
Mr. Lam Chi Sing, engineer. I'm from Association of Engineering Professionals in Society. On N E N T N D A project, I have the following to say. Population is on the rise. We need economic development. We need to improve living environment. That's why we have to have housing development. We have to have community facilities and infrastructural development. In the past dozens of years, new towns development provide housing. It also provides industrial buildings. They offer job opportunities. In recent years, we have subdivided flats in Hong Kong, caged flats in Hong Kong. These are problems. It attracts public attention. Property price is on the rise. People cannot afford housing and rental is also high. Even the SMEs can hardly make ends meet. When compared to Shanghai, Shenzhen and Singapore, we have limited land resources. So providing housing has been the concern of public and the government. We need sufficient land supply to provide for private and public housing as well as hotels. The revised N E N T development cover four hundred fifty hectare in Kootong North and one hundred sixty hectare in Fanning North. They will provide for subsidized housing as well as private housing to address the housing needs. It will attract a total population of four hundred sixty thousand people in Kootong North and Fanning North. The additional population will amount to one hundred seventy thousand people. There will be a housing units of sixty thousand seven hundred and thirty-six thousand six hundred will be subsidized housing and twenty-four thousand odd will be private housing. There will be over thirty thousand job opportunities. There will be retail commercial activities in the NDAs too. These will provide job opportunities and will make proper use of public resources. Apart from that, the land will also provide community facilities. Some land can also be reserved, will be reserved for farming and village development. People will be relocated to designated area. The land will be for housing development to address our housing needs. Our association urges the administration to complete studies, engineering studies. Time's up, time's up for you.
Ms. Chan Lok Tong. Good morning. Let me introduce myself. I'm in my twenties. I will be the one who stands to gain if the N E N T is to be developed. I may be living in New Town. I live in Eastern District now. I've never been to Kootong before the scheme is announced, but I'm against the plan. From my education and from government publicity, I understand that there may be sacrifices in a time of development. Developing N E N T will sacrifice the interest of the villagers. It's inevitable. They get their own compensation and they will lose their jobs and it's their own fault. But land shortage and the sacrifice of the minority to fulfill the needs of the majority, these are all lies by the administration. Media and academics have told us that we have lots of idle land in Hong Kong. The golf course can replace an E N T project. And there is evidence showing that the administration made wrong projection in terms of population. The project is not just. You are destroying the area. You claim, however, you will bring about benefits. I want to say that the three areas to be developed already have existing industries. There are recycling industries, timber industry and the only soy sauce factory there in Hong Kong there. Lots of villagers are living there. Some are non-indigenous villagers, but you shouldn't say because they're non-indigenous villagers, they, they should be viewed as invisible. You could have avoided these sacrifices through better planning. So the administration should not shake its responsibility. It should take on board public views so that we have a just society. Shelf N E N T project and review land policy and land planning in Hong Kong. Thank you.
Ms. Chan Chi Wu Ha. Good morning. For a just person, you should look at the public interest. For someone mean, it only is, look at his, he only looks at his own interest. I want to apply this to the N E N T.
The government has polarized local peasants and farmers. This is wrong. Farming is a perfectly respectable occupation. As a city dweller, I ordered two ketties of locally grown vegetables. In a two-piece household, you can calculate how many ketties of vegetables do I need from local farmers before I can survive? If all seven million people in Hong Kong want safe vegetables, how many farmers do we need? Well, this is about food safety and also food shortage all over the world. Our neighboring cities such as Shenzhen and Shanghai, they have the indicator of providing at least more than ten percent of their locally grown vegetables for people. Why is it that you have no respect for the lives and safety of Hong Kong people? We should all be compassionate. One after and other village houses have been pulled down without prior notice. A few days ago, a farmer burst into tears before the secretary. Has a secretary ever put himself in his shoes? Well, you claim that you want to provide housing for young people at the expense of farmers who have contributed so much to us. We should not be put on the spot because the secretary talks about a growing population and not enough land. But why hasn't the government considered an effective population policy? With four thousand hectares of idle land being used for container yards and open storage, why should we waste such valuable land? I appreciate that Mr. Chen has his concerns. Because the whole plan is not really justified. He only wants to complete his political mission. I am a teacher. I really want to defend this precious land in N E N T on behalf of our children. There are things that cannot be purchased. You cannot attack a price tag to our land and our clean environment. I hope that you understand that you should allow history and ecology and human beings to coexist. You should not evict farming households that have lived there for so many generations. Well, a gentleman will work for the interests of everyone. I hope that my future generations would rather be a useless person than someone who only pursues his private interest.
Time's up for you. Mr. Chung Chi Kit. Well, this is not easy. This is already the fourth public hearing and yet so many people have taken the time and trouble to come to here to discuss these issues. Many points have already been expressed that we have our different positions. Some is here for their sector's interest, some for their privacy interest, some are here to protect their own homes. Alright, we want to move government officials with justifications and with feelings. Will N E N T development plan resolve all these issues? I'd like to respond to what Mr. Lam Chi Sing said. First, why do we have a housing shortage in Hong Kong? Why is it that we have more units than households by more than hundreds of? With four thousand hectares of idle land being used for container yards and open storage, why should we waste such valuable land? I appreciate that Mr. Chen has his concerns. Because the whole plan is not really justified. He only wants to complete his political mission. I am a teacher. I really want to defend this precious land in NENT on behalf of our children. There are things that cannot be purchased. You cannot attack, a price tag to our land and our clean environment. I hope that you understand that you should allow history and ecology and human beings to coexist. You should not evict farming households that have lived there for so many generations. Well, a gentleman will work for the interests of everyone. I hope that my future generations would rather be a useless person than someone who only pursues his private interest. Terms up for you.
Mr. Chung Chee Kit. Well, this is not easy. This is really the fourth public hearing, and yet so many people have taken the time and trouble to come to here to discuss this issues. Many points have already been expressed, that we have our different positions. Some is here for their sector's interest, some for their privacy interest, some are here to protect their own homes. All right, we want to move government officials with justifications and with feelings. Will NENT development plan resolve all these issues? I'd like to respond to what Mr. Lam Chi Shing said. First, why do we have a housing shortage in Hong Kong? Why is it that we have more units than households by more than hundreds of thousands of units? And why are still people homeless? Because some people speculate in housing, just like Mr. Paul Chen, our secretary. Why hasn't got the government policy for tackling this? We've got two thousand hectares of residential land. Why shouldn't these be developed first before we develop NENT? Many indigenous villagers in the NENT are for development. Well, if you resume their land or abolish the small house policy, then you have one thousand two hundred hectares of land for development. I'm sure indigenous villagers will welcome your move, why don't you do that? Six, is it really a land supply issue or distribution issue? Seven, should all land be built? Must be, we be totally urbanized? Is development a must? Have we considered the ratio between city and rural areas? Well, our built-up areas account for twenty-three percent and rural areas five percent. Why doesn't the government use brown sites, brownfield sites, and also vacant land for housing? Why can't redevelopment in built-up areas? Isn't it ridiculous? Because you have to destroy the existing buildings first. Ninth, do you have any planning for commerce and business? Will you have enough jobs for people there? I live in Taipu, I ride on the Israel every day, and Israel is really up to capacity. Has the administration considered transport links to the urban areas? Myself, I'm a young person who wants to become a farmer. Understand that farming can be developed in a sustainable manner. We should have organic, sustainable, and safe farming. This is my vision, but there is no development in this regard. I've been to Ping Chee Ma Shipo. Land has been hoarded there, and the government has never done anything about it. Thank you.
Ms Fu Ka Wing. Good morning. I am a student, I live on Hong Kong Island. You may say that I'm totally unrelated to NENT, but just like people there, I'm a Hong Kong person. I treat Hong Kong as my home. But they are crying out, they insist on no removal, no demolition, and I am saddened. Why should their homes be crushed where we can continue to live happily? You say that a few decades afterwards, young people will be living there, that's a long time away. We thank you for your planning, but we, young people, have never said that we want to live there. We've never asked people's homes to be crushed so that we can live there. Please do not shift the responsibility to us, we've never asked for it, and we are never allowed to elect you, and therefore you cannot represent us. Homes will be destroyed, and farmlands and natural environment will also be destroyed. Hong Kong needs farming to provide us with food, to provide us with healthy, non-toxic farm produce. And the natural ecology requires farming to survive. Can we have just one nature park and that is enough? Can Hong Kong people have a society that is all built up? If farming cannot exist in Hong Kong, then what is, what kind of inclusive society the government is promoting? Isn't the government contradicting itself? Yes, we need to satisfy housing needs, we also need a balanced development in all aspects. To solve this problem, we must long-term and far-cited policies, and we must have a population policy. Otherwise, ten years afterwards, even with Ku Tong, we cannot cope with the ever-rising population. We should not just demolish homes. With old areas, so representative of our culture and tradition have been removed. What is left of our culture, we call the cultural desert. Will we just have a group of public officers having unauthorized structures and holding land? So please manage our homes properly. You have invested so much in this campaign, Hong Kong, our home. Why don't you spare your efforts and do something more for the overall interest of Hong Kong? Please withdraw this plan. So that villagers there can continue to live their home, and we can friendly and inclusive Hong Kong city and villages can coexist. We do not just need high rises. Please take care of the needs of the residents. Please be sympathetic with us, we all want to have our, to have a happy home. Please help us to build a more acceptable home. Thank you.
Ms Young Lee Ki. Thank you. I represent the Hong Kong Bird Watching Society. The following is the position of the society on the revised NENT plan. First, we support the resumption of Long Valley for conservation and construction of a nature park. However, the nature park should be extended to the northern part of Long Valley. According to the Conservancy Association and my society, there are over one hundred and forty species of birds living in Long Valley, and it's also on the migratory path of birds. And it also links up with the Long Valley wetland, and therefore the sites should be managed together. The administration claims that the northern part of Long Valley should be preserved for farming. And any negative impact, any, any planning applications with a negative impact on the nature there should be rejected. However, we're afraid that indigenous villagers can still apply to build small houses on private land near the boundary of village environs. And we're also afraid illegal dumping of fly tipping will continue to happen. Long Valley has always been a farming area. The flora and fauna there cannot support human interference. Therefore, the area should not be developed for leisure and recreation. It should not be positioned as a natural park. Long Valley is in between of two NDAs and surrounded by high rises. Such an isolated piece of wetland will see its eco-value greatly diminished. This just next to NDAs, and there will be a cycle track, and therefore pedestrian flow will greatly increase. Please consider the capacity of Long Valley, and please provide facilities to prevent human interruption here, or human disruption here. Long Valley is very important to wet farming there. We must have a mode of management that can take care of the ecology. The nature park is a new concept, and therefore you must be innovative. Any activity that is, or any farming activities that is conducive to the flora and fauna there should be encouraged.
Ms Su Cheng Yi. Chairman and Secretary. Good morning. I'd like to criticize the mode of development of new towns and the urban areas. The government was very conservative in the early stages of public consultation. It was sound very quietly, and many villagers were only made aware of the plan at a very late stage in the internet. Well, if society is really people-oriented, how come in PE1, PE2, residents who really live there have not been invited to take part in the discussion? Take Ku Tong North as an example, or NENT as an example. They have their local economy. For instance, there is a soy sauce plant, and also industries that have been displaced from elsewhere. There are longtime farmers there, and there is also organic farming going on. Is it because the government does not attach importance to farming? Such that it has totally ignored the economic contribution of farming there. We want new towns, do we want more causeway bays, more centrals, more shopping malls, more famous brands? And do we want property prices so high that they are no longer affordable to anyone? What is the development for? You say young people want such developments, have you ever consulted us? Well, after the XRL and Choy Yun Chun incident, more and more young people are willing to come out to ask for preservation of local farming. We don't want this high consumption, high growth development pattern. This is against our core values. You may think that, well, we're repeating the same arguments in these four public hearings, but let me tell you that we do set store by such core values, and therefore we've come out to tell you, and this is public opinion. Have you ever paid heed to public opinion? Although what I say today may not be able to change the whole plan, but I believe we should take this opportunity to tell you what we want. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lau Ke Feng. Good morning, members, officials, chairman. On NENT development, I have several important questions. First of all, for this enhanced new town development, it will only let the private developers make more money. And vicious land resumption will be more, will happen more often. So I suggest the government should resume all the land to avoid collusion between administration and business sector. And in turn, the government can take the lead in the project. The government doesn't have to work with the private developers, and that will avoid many problems. Next, I'm concerned about transportation. Secretary, you may not know that if you take the East Rail at peak hours, you know, well, the rail already reaches saturation point at present. There are over three hundred thousand people living in Northern District. And in the future, after the NDAs are developed, the total population in Northern District will be four hundred thousand odd population. These people will rely on East Rail. But the East Rail can not take any more increase in passengers. You may say there will be northern link, but still, if the residents want to go to the city area, they have to take the East Rail. So do you have any comprehensive plans for railway development? Do you have any plans that can alleviate public concern? Next, job opportunities, employment. According to the enhanced plan, there will be over thirty thousand new job opportunities in the NDAs. We are worried, however, this will be a repetition of Tsin Shui Wai, the same mistake will happen there again. I don't think there are adequate kinds of jobs there. For the thirty thousand new jobs to be created, they will be concentrated in the retail sector, in the shopping malls. So not many, many people will stand to gain? So will the administration consider providing more different kinds of jobs? So that you will not repeat the same mistake in Tsin Shui Wai? Thank you.
Ms Law Sa Yen. Good morning, Chairman, Secretary, and legislators. For the NENT project and how the government can protect the interests of squatters and non-indigenous villagers, I found the package disappointing. Developers hoard land, and they resort to all sorts of means. They threaten people, they fence up the areas, they send out letters by lawyers, they may even get the help of tribe members to drive people away. I've seen so many of these occurring, district council in North District. I can tell you, this is doing great damage psychologically and mentally to the villagers. There was a time that the government says the CNT approach would be adopted. The villagers thought that was their hopes. But now, you work with the business sector, the private developers. This is disappointing. The developers will stand to gain. In North District, many mainland investors are also hoarding land in Tin Ping Village, Ling Shan Village, and even Ping Chee and Tak Koo Ling. There are land resumptions going on. Squatters and non-indigenous villagers, they are the most disadvantaged people. So please consider the following. Adopt the CNT approach. Pay heed to the land resumption laws. So that you can crack down on speculation. When developers see that they don't stand to gain, they will decelerate on land resumption. And that will alleviate public concern that there might be collusion between government and business sector. And please pay attention to the needs of squatters and non-indigenous people. So that their interest will not be exploited. There should be coexistence of rural and urban areas. You may like to, you may consider relocating the non-indigenous villagers institute. These people ask for little, they hope they will not be subject to disturbances. They hope the administration will give them more help. Thank you.
Next, Mr. Kam Man Fong. Thank you, Chairman. Now, many problems in Hong Kong boils down to housing needs. There's a rise in population. The New People Party agree that there should be new town development to address needs brought about by population growth, to address employment needs and housing needs. Concerning the revised NENT development, we have the following points to make. First of all, job opportunities. I heard from a deputation that Ping Chee will be taken out of the development. And since then, not much land will be left for RND and industrial developments. Job opportunities in the area will be reduced because more housing units will be developed, will be created. In that case, many local residents will have to go to other districts to work. This will create pressure on them. People living in new towns hope that their basic needs will be addressed within the area they live in. So you should think about how you can address their employment needs in the NDA. Next, about farming. The New People Party all along thinks that we need to keep primary industry in Hong Kong. By that, we don't mean allocating a piece of farmland, and that can be regarded as support to farming. We know land is precious in Hong Kong. But apart from allocating land for farming, you should consider the farming method. The farmers are relying on simple farming method now. The government should think about providing technological support to boost their producers. So don't just think that you can allocate a piece of land for farming, and that can be regarded to support to our primary industry. NENT development cannot address all the problems we have. We understand that. Apart from this project, we understand that the government is considering development in NENT North. For example, Lo Ma Cho Loop. There may be developments in future. Will you consider the, any coordination between Lo Ma Cho and NENT development? That's all I have to say for this time being. Thank you. Deputations and individuals, if you have any written submission, please put down your names there and give them to and give them to our staff before you leave the room, so that we can further understand your views. Open floor for members. Three members have indicated that they wish to ask questions. Dr. K K Kwok, Emily Lau, Dr. Fernando Cheng. Anyone else? Gary Fan. Four minutes. Four minutes. Dr. K K Kwok.
Thank you, Chairman. My thanks to deputations and individuals. We are on the fourth day of the public hearing. So, Secretary. After today, because of many constraints and difficulties, we no longer have any occasions to listen to views. We can no longer allocate any time to discuss it in August. It's clear that some developers stand to gain and some people who have a vision will stand to gain from the project. But some people are very clever, like the family of the secretary. They knew about this plan in nineteen ninety-six. And in fact, in nineteen ninety-three, the administration already said that NENT would be developed when it announced the railway development. So some developers, like the secretary's family, quietly hoard land. These people are the ones who gain most from the project. The government is pandering to the developers with this revised plan. Rehabilitation of farming. Now, most of the land for farming are in the hands of the private developers. The government can always make changes. These land will not be built up, but maybe later after negotiation, buildings will be built there. So I think all these are undertakings about rehabilitation of farming or just NT West. Transportation is a problem. Job opportunities is a problem. But these are not the, shouldn't be the focus. The problem is the secretary. Secretary, you have yet to give explanations on the many scandals. And if you continue to lead the project, you will face lots of difficulty. Some people ask you to resign. I'm not going to repeat it because it's meaningless to say any further on it. I want to tell deputations here that before consultation, you, secretary, said that the project will be launched. There is no room for discussion. So is it the case that the government will not make any changes and that the deputations are here to waste their time? Is it the case that the government will take the land to give to the developers so that a small group of people can gain? Can you tell those who are watching the live broadcast and those who are here that the government would definitely implement the project? Secretary. Chairman, for NENT NDA development, it is to address the housing need in the medium and long run. It is an important project for us in this regard. Over sixty thousand seven hundred new flats will be built. Over thirty-six thousand will be subsidized housing, including PLH and HOS housing units. Many deputations and individuals have come to express their views over the past few days. We have listened to them. And my thanks to you for coming here. We have jotted notes. We will consolidate your views together with other views we have collected to see if we can incorporate any of these views so that we can do a better job in the future. My colleagues will take the initiative to approach the affected villagers to give them explanation. And on the basis of proper use of public money, we will give assistance. Will the administration go forward without paying attention to others?
Ms. Emily Lau. I thank members of the public for coming to the last session of the public hearing of the panel. Well, it's just the last session today. I think what members raised just now should be pursued. We have sat through all four public hearings. Just like we, I think we know that the majority of the people are against this proposal because it is not bottom-up, it's top-down. And for agricultural rehabilitation, there are hundreds of people waiting for allocation of land for rehabilitation. So how can we ensure that the promises here will be honored? I think we've fallen into this trap, tax- taxist trap. It's all about trust, all right? It's okay for you to incorporate or to collect the views received today. And I understand the secretariat needs some rest. So we'll not meet in August. But after that, we have another discussion. We'll continue our discussions. So secretary, you need political support in many ways. So you have heard the views. And as a fair-minded person, how would you say we should proceed? Secretary, as I said, we will proactively approach the villagers to explain to them our plan. And farming has been mentioned, and farming rehabilitation as well. Farming policies under the portfolio of the Food and Health Bureau. With the Bureau, we have follow-up to do with regard to agricultural rehabilitation. As I said, in Kootong South, we have identified fellow farmland. And a large percentage will be reserved for affected farmers of N E N T N D As. I also note that much of the land is privately owned. So the F H B and the A F C D will follow up for us. And A F C D will also take the initiative to approach land owners to ascertain their wish. And farmers affected by the N D As will be given priority. So F H B will provide separate responses relation to farming policies. And some deputations are concerned about job opportunities. Well, let me share with you some statistics. The N D As must have more housing units. So there will be thirty-seven thousand six hundred jobs. Fifteen thousand four hundred would come from the shopping malls and retail sector. And you see, we have also reserved land for high-valued activities. There will provide seventeen thousand jobs. As for G I C sites, there will be schools, bridges, and other community facilities there. We can have five thousand jobs. In other words, the jobs available there will not be too will not will will be of a wide variety. Dr. Fernando Zhang, we've listened for four days the voices of people affected by the N D As. For people who have interest in this plan or those who go for economic development, think that we can we can see the economic value in the plan and they tend to support the plan. But for people who treasure the current lifestyle in villages or oppose the plan, at this stage, I think it is useless to talk reason with the secretary because he will just repeat the same replies. There are voices to ask Mr. Chen to step down. We've also passed a motion to that effect. However, at this stage, I don't want Mr. Paul to step down. I want him to stay on and use his strong will. And with the protection offered to him by the government, I want him genuinely to stay on because he is now a symbol or icon of this unjust government. His appearance will cause people to think how lack of integrity this government is. His appearance will cause us to will will bring to mind subdivided units and also the conflict of interest in this government. Without him, the unjust, the injustice of the N E N T N D As will not be so obvious. So Mr. Chen, please stay on. Use your determination and persevere and steam through this plan. And we'll let people see how we have degenerated. And they will be able to see how this government, who has no concern for general interest, who is only interested in protecting developers' interests. And on the one hand, they talk about loving mercy. And they talk about coexistence of the city and village. And then on the other hand, they are destroying homes, destroying villages. This is very ironical. So secretary, please persevere, stay on for as long as you can. The N E N T plan will go on for a while. So please go on. I'm sure you have all the support of your team. We will explain to the public more what will be destroyed by the N E N T plan. It will destroy our land, destroy our culture, destroy our farming industry. We will continue to appeal to Mr. Chen to stay on in his job. Please persevere. We support you. We support you to stay on. Thank you. Mr. Gary Fan. Thank you. I thank the deputations for their attendance. The secretary said that for agricultural rehabilitation, he will continue to listen to the views of the public. However, in November twenty-twelve, when we were in the fourth sitting of the council, Dr. Fernando Zhang already moved a motion on agricultural rehabilitation or farming policies. And then the N E N T plan was mentioned. However, there's no response from the administration. So welcome you to come back. Even though the council will go into recess, please don't think that we'll let you go. Please don't think that we will also go into summer recess. Just like last year's national education, we will go to the community and disseminate this message. Too many people in Hong Kong don't know how bad we're doing in terms of local producing, local produce. And for the sake of future young people, you want to destroy homes. It's not that all professionals have come here to say that building houses are always good. While there are surveyors, planners, and a group of professionals have tried to think of feasible alternative. It is possible to put city and rural areas together. We use, we only use two-thirds of the funding, of course, for development of a new town. This is feasible. Still, the secretary has not accepted our views. So before the first of July, before we have the Occupy Central campaign next year, the most important issue will be N E N T. So please don't think that you can stay on. Please don't think you can survive once again. Secretary, you claimed time and again that you and your wife did not own land in Kootong. And some members asked about, asked you. And you said it was just some of the shares of that company which really owned land there. You are a professional. I criticize you. You you you're using your professional knowledge in accountancy or law to profiteer and to hide your potential conflict of interest. Under common law, there is the principle of resulting trust. I'm talking about your brother-in-law, who purchased the farmland at two-point-seven million dollars only a few years after he was bankrupt. Perhaps he did not use his own money. He could acquired the land by means of a trust. And if the money actually came from your wife, then your wife is the beneficial owner of the shares. Can you openly say to the panel and to the media and to everyone in Hong Kong, where did your brother-in-law got money to purchase the shares at two-point-seven million dollars, given that he was bankrupt a few years ago? Are you or your son or wife the beneficial owner of the shares? Mr. Chen. I think the accusations by Mr. Gary Fan were unbiased. Or I mean, were unsubstantiated. I said very clearly that it was a real transaction, transaction of shares from my wife to his younger brother. And the assignment documents were released to the public a few days ago. When are you going to make a disclosure? Myself, my children, and my wife no longer have any interest in the Kootong plot. And I can say categorically that it was a real transaction, certainly not in the form of a trust.
Mr. Chairman Kam Lam. Thank you, Chairman. I thank the deputations for giving us their views this morning. The N E N T plan is still in consultation process. However, we have discussed it for quite a while. Of course, there are voices supporting and against the development. From what I've heard, I think the majority of the community would want the plan to be improved so that people affected can be well taken care of and that there should be a proper balance between urban and rural development. Of course, recent developments have not been too satisfactory. Some people have deliberately shifted the focus to criticism against Mr. Paul Chen. I think such criticisms are unfair. Well, even if we want to criticize a person or to claim that he has conflict of interest, we have to look at the facts. If we are just calling names and using totally ungrounded accusations to say that he has conflict of interest and he should not handle the development plan, this is very unfair. Some deputation said that we need to consume local leg grown vegetables. And she has to consume two ketties of veggie every day. I think we should be fair. All imported veggies from the mainland are subject to very stringent health surveillance. Most of our veggies come from the mainland. And if we say all the vegetables are toxic, well, this is not a fact. And I note that there are residents affected by redevelopment plans in the urban areas. Secretary, while we are not talking about compensation issues arising from urban redevelopment, we should address their problems as well. Of course, a land resumption and a shop assumption would impact on the lives of residents. However, the U R A has acted in accordance with the law. The compensation package is based on a seven-year-old unit. When land or premises are resumed from shop operators, tenants, or property owners.
Now, some people may not find the compensation acceptable, but some others, many others, have already accepted the compensation in Kootong, in Taikoc Chee. People who don't accept the compensation are in the minority. Many have already accepted the compensation and have moved out. How come only a small number are left and are facing the unfair treatment from the U R A? We should understand the matter from the U R A to so that we can give a reply to those affected. So I think we should follow up on this matter with the U R A.
Mr. Chairman Kam Lam mentioned some deputations here are talking about some dissatisfactory treatment they get from redevelopment projects with the U R A. We can make arrangements to follow up on the matter. So for those interested in letting the complaint unit of Let's Call to know more about your plight, please let us know after this meeting. Mr. Alan Leung. I'm not sure whether the secretary has read any magazines today, this morning. Now, this morning, it's reported that in the past, the secretary works in or works for a real estate company. And one of his colleagues, surnamed Chen. Well, it said that a Chen couple held shares of a company registered in B V I. Thus, according to the report, I don't know whether the secretary will give a reply in one go here. If you've read it, I think it's unavoidable that you should give a reply. But in, but if that's the case, you're giving a reply bit by bit. In any event, you have to discuss the N E N T project with the public. And in giving our replies bit by bit has already created crisis. So I think it's really impossible for you to lead and launch the N E N T project, secretary. Now, the media pressed the secretary to give our information bit by bit. And we come to know there are at least eight, nine companies registered overseas. And we're talking about a piece of land of twenty thousand square foot. For just a small piece of land and there are so many overseas registered companies, overseas registered companies involved, I don't think this practice is cost-effective. Now, I have questions for you, secretary. For your family members, your wife, your in-laws, do they in relation to N E N T development own any further plots within the development boundary? According to the Declaration Code for Civil Services and Politically Appointed Officials, the secretary should also disclose potential interests or conflict of interest, not just the existing conflict of interest. So my questions are, first of all, about the employee surnamed Chen who worked for a real estate developer company and his wife about this media report. And next, whether his wife, his in-laws, his family members hold any further land in the N E N T development boundary? Secretary, I came to this meeting early in this morning. So I did not read the magazines. I can tell you firmly, according to my knowledge, my in-laws, my wife, my children. Except for the Kootong land held by Stamen Industries, they don't own any land interest in N E N T. My wife, ourselves, my children, as I said earlier on. In fact, my wife sold her shares on the tenth of August, uh, tenth of October. And since then, there's no interest held by my wife. And it was a real transaction. You are a liar. The B V I is not yours, as big as not coming through. According to your knowledge, well, tell me, how many B V I registered companies do you have? According to your knowledge, how many of such companies do your family members hold? Do you know you are an official? You are doing something bad with B V I registered companies. This is happening to C Y Leung too. We've asked him about this for a year. We tried to identify the person, the trustee, but we could not identify the trustee. Please pause there. Dr. Chen. His placard board blocks me. Let me show you what's written there. No, I don't want to read what's written there. You are blocking my view. Mr. Leung, Mr. Leung, please put it aside. Any known lies should be told to us. This is what he's here for. Now, yesterday, people gave you this banknotes from the Heil Bank. So what should we give you today? When I listened to the secretary, I thought about the story. Qin Kuai and his wife discussed how to conspire against General Erfei. And this couple, and the wife of Qin Kuai dreams that she goes to hell and that their conspiracy has been exposed. She dreams about this. Alan Leung, ask you the questions. I don't think you need to read the report in the magazine. He's just asking you whether you are making use of B V I companies. How many B V I companies are involved? How many are owned by your wife? How many are owned by your brother-in-law? Just tell us, but you refuse to do so. Tell us so we know how many possible lies are there. Well, if we know, then we will resign. We will stop here. We will stop here. When we stop, you don't have to come here to tell us. So can you tell us that you, your in-laws, your wife, and Alan Leung? I think his own family, the Chen's family, may also own B V I companies. Anyway, how many companies do you own? Now, I'll give you time. I'll give you time to give a reply. According to your knowledge, how many B V I companies does your family own? You don't have to tell us some issues about C Y Leung. Does C Y Leung know you have B V I companies controlling all these matters? Secretary. Mr. Leung's accusations are not substantiated and they're not fair. I'll take back my analogy. Mr. Leung, Mr. Leung, please go back to your seat. Mr. Leung, leave the room, please.
Speakers of mic.
Mr. Albert Chen. Chairman. Last time, I made an other placard about someone holding land. Please sit down. You are blocking others. I have several minutes only. If they want to read it, I can turn the board to them. Long Kwah Hong. I mean Albert Chen. Shut up. I'm speaking for the people. If you continue in this way, I have to ask you to leave. Chairman, this happened in previous meetings, in council meetings. The placards are too large. I'll put them in the front. The most important thing is for people to see it. I want to show this placard about someone holding land. Albert Chen, Albert Chen, just put the placards there and go back to your seat. Put them down and people can read it. You claim to do justice, Mr. Albert Chen. Mr. Albert Chen, I ask you to put down the placards and go back to your seat to speak, otherwise I'll stop your speech. You are abusing your power. I'm just showing the placards. How can you stop me? I asked you to put them here, show them here, and then go back to your seat to continue with your speech. Go back to your seat immediately. Go back. A member should be in his seat when he speaks. I'm not causing any trouble, obstruction. We'll pause for five minutes.